Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the York City Council meeting of October the 20th. It is 6 o'clock, and we would ask that you please call the roll.
Rivera.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Ritter Dixon.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Nixon.
Here. And before we begin the legislative session, the council. The council. I am getting a terrific reverberation here. The council and the mayor wish to make a statement about the recent history. And I've asked Councilwoman Washington as the Chair of the Police and Fire Committee to please begin.
Thank you, Council President Nixon. We, as city officials, envision a joyful, united, and engaged community where people have the power to express their ideals and concerns freely. Our mission is to promote social equity and to improve quality of life by building vibrant communities where everyone can live, work, and play together.
Our priority is to keep our residents and visitors safe and well-informed. There have been rumors and speculations surrounding the resignation of Police Commissioner Robinson. We stand before you united to ease the community's concerns.
At a time when our citizens are expressing raw and emo- raw and real emotions in response to the senseless deaths and mistreatment of African-Americans across the country, we need healing now more than ever. This is one of the lowest points our country has ever faced in decades. We know that our residents are angry, hurting, and saddened by these events. This is understandable.
Mayor Helfrich.
You're muted.
Thank you, sorry. We want you to know that we do not accept police brutality. We responded immediately with publishing our use of force policy and assembling a team to evaluate and implement the Eight Camps campaign, a nationwide campaign to bring immediate change to police departments across the country. America is facing the COVID-19 pandemic as well as a racial pandemic that is devastating the lives and livelihoods of communities of color. Racism poses a public health threat, and the psychological burden is immense.
We want you to know that we hear your cries, and we vow to work to heal the community through outreach and inclusion. Real and honest dialogue about race and police-community relations are already underway, which will lead to positive changes and improvements in transparency and citizen involvement in reviewing the actions of local law enforcement.
We will work with our residents towards building a welcoming community, but we cannot do it without you. Let us focus on solutions to the issues our community is facing and resolve to make a difference. Ms. Washington?
We are open to join you with our community and law enforcement and working together to eradicate the systemic inequalities and racial unrest in our community. As elected officials, we do not always have all the answers. It may take some time, but we want to work together so that our community can heal and grow together in unity. We wish to work with you hand in hand, not just for today, but for generations to come. Thank you.
And thank you all. We want to have Councilman Rivera, please read the full statement in Spanish for our Latinx population.
Thank you. Y gracias. Nosotros como funcionarios de la ciudad visualizamos una comunidad alegre, unida y comprometida, donde las personas tienen el poder de expresar sus ideas y preocupaciones libremente. Nuestra misión es promover la ecuidad social y mejorar la calidad de vida mediante la construcción de comunidades vibrantes donde todos puedan vivir, trabajar, y jugar juntos. Nuestra prior- prior- prioridad es mantener a nuestros residentes y visitantes seguros y bien informados. Ha habido rumores y especulaciones en tomo a la renuncia del comisionado de policía Robinson. Estamos ante ustedes unidos para aliviar las preocupaciones de la comunidad. En un momento en que nuestros ciudadanos están expresando emociones crudas y reales en respuesta a las muertes sin sentido y el maltrato de los afroamericanos en todo el condado. Necesitamos sanación ahora más que nunca. Este es uno de los puntos más bajos que ha enfrentado nuestro país en décadas. Sabemos que nuestros residentes están enojados, dolidos, e intristecidos por estos eventos. Esto es comprensible. No aceptaremos la brutalidad policial y respondimos de inmediato publicando nuestra policía de uso de la fuerza y reuniendo en equipo para evaluar e implementar una campaña nacional para atraer un cambio inmediato a los departamentos de policía. Los Estados Unidos se afrenta a la pandemia del COVID-19, así como a una pandemia racial que está devastando las vidas y los medios de subsistencia de las comunidades de color. El racismo representa una amenaza para la salud pública, y la carga psicológica es inmensa. Queremos que sepa. Escuchamos sus gritos y nos comprometemos a trabajar para sanar a esta comunidad a través del alcance y la inclusión. Ya se está llevando a cabo un diálogo real y honesto sobre la raza y las relaciones entre la policía y la comunidad, lo que conducirá a cambios positivos y mejoras, mejoras en la transparencia y la participación ciudadana en la revisión de las acciones de la policía local. Trabajamos. Trabajamos abiertos y unimos con nuestra comunidad y las fuerzas del orden para trabajar juntos para erradicar las desigualdades sistémicas y los disturbios raciales en nuestra comunidad. Como funcionamos afectas, no siempre tenemos las respuestas. Puede llevar algún tiempo para que... pero queremos trabajar juntos para que nuestra comunidad pueda sanar y crecer juntos en unidad. Gracias.
Thank you, Councilman. Diana, would you make sure that this appears on our website in both English and in Spanish?
Will do.
Thank you. We will continue with approval of the minutes of September the 15th. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of September the 15th, as distributed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. There will be, we did have, council had an executive session meeting on Tuesday, October the 13th, at 1 o'clock to discuss an issue of personnel. We have a presentation by Ms. Elaine Bono, Downtown Inc., this evening, and we thank you for being here. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Nixon. I'm going to share my screen. If you'll allow me just a moment to bring that up. Are you able to see it?
No.
Okay, let me try again. It worked. Worked perfectly when we tried it before.
Did you stop, Cher?
Let's see. Okay, thank you, Diana. Are you able to see it now?
I was saying, but yeah, we can see it now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you to council and to members of the community for joining us. Thank you for allowing me to make a presentation. My name is Elaine Bono. I'm the Director of Downtown Inc., and I just wanted to take some time this evening to present what Downtown Inc. is recommending for the proposed renewal of the Business Improvement District Assessment for the period of 21, 21 through the year 2025. And are you able to see this on your screen? I don't know if it's enlarged too much or if it's full screen, so let me know if it's not appearing properly for any of you.
It's good for me.
Okay, perfect. So what you'll see to the left is a map of what is defined as the bid, which is the Business Improvement District, or what we refer to as the Central Business District, which is the 26 block, 26 blocks of downtown. And currently, commercial properties are assessed at $1 mil, which is $1 per $1,000 of value of the property. And just by comparison, that is the lowest assessment in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Just for comparison, Lancaster is, I believe, at 2.45, and there are some that are upwards to $3 mil. And only commercial properties are assessed, not residential properties within the Business Improvement District. And we assess these funds really so that they can be invested directly into downtown improvements, such as public safety, downtown environment enhancements, lighting improvements, cleanliness and beautification. I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in a couple of slides. And this assessment rate is approved by city council with the input of property owners every five years. And so that's why we're making this presentation for your consideration tonight, because it is due for approval, review and approval for the new year, starting 2021, as I said, through 2025. And the bid is governed by, the York Business Improvement District Authority is governed by a board of directors, and they're made up of city residents, property owners, business owners, and others who are invested in the success of Downtown Inc. And as you, of Downtown, and as you can see, as the Director of Downtown Inc., I work directly with this board in evaluating the bid assessment. So here's kind of what our analysis has looked like. I'll just summarize this quickly. The board, the staff, we've also brought in some advisors over the past two-plus years, really to just explore the options for bid renewal and really thoughtfully weigh the options. We assembled an ad hoc committee to serve really as a task force to exercise due diligence in this regard and speak with property owners, meeting with other EDCs, Economic Development Corporations, and bids around the Commonwealth to see what they're doing, how they are managing their bid assessments. And we evaluated options, as you can see, that range from what would it look like if we increased the mil, the assessment from $1 mil? What would it look like if we expanded the boundaries of the bid? And we're happy to share all of that research with you, because as you can imagine, and there were several scenarios that we looked at. Also, you know, in addition to commercial properties, are there other property owners that should be considered for bid assessment over these past two years? So without going into all of those different scenarios, if anyone is interested in that research, I'm happy to share that with you. But in summary, I think what we came to the conclusion is that in this economic climate, and as we look at the composition of our bid, you know, and the priorities of our businesses right now with COVID and other factors, what makes sense for us as a community, as a business improvement district, is to maintain the assessment as it stands at $1 mil. And so I'll talk through a little bit more about what that means in just a moment. So again, maintaining the assessment at $1 mil for the five-year period, maintaining the geographic boundaries, and I would respectfully submit to request a resolution for your consideration for the next meeting for approval of that recommendation. And just to share a little bit of our process. So this year, starting in March, as I said, there was an ad hoc committee that was assembled to really review and do the exploration and evaluation. It was presented to the York Business Improvement District Authority Board in March. The board approved the submission of the recommendation to maintain the assessment as it stands. We then mailed that communication to all of the property owners. And in May, we held a virtual meeting, a virtual hearing, so that we could share with property owners the new business plan. It was also advertised on the City of York's website. And the business plan can be viewed on the Downtown Inc. website. If, for anyone who has not seen it, property owners who may not have received that information, you can view it on Downtown Inc. It's downtownyorkpa.com/ybida, and you'll see the five-year business plan there. So following the public hearing, there was a 45-day period for property owners to submit any objections or comments in writing. We didn't receive any, so we would like to proceed to resolution for this recommendation. And along with the, as I said, with the request for renewal, business owners, property owners did receive a copy of the five-year business plan. And that plan really summarizes the four focus areas for Downtown Inc. And what we strive to do and what we work on every day, which is the physical landscape or downtown environment, public safety, economic development, events, and promotions. So, you know, what that looks like for us on a, on a day-to-day basis is really, you know, for, for physical landscape or downtown environment, it's, you know, having a clean and welcoming environment in downtown York. That's the cleanup crew. That's the downtown plantings that you see seasonally throughout the year. Public safety, working very closely with our York City Police for overtime deployment, installation of lighting for safety, safety cameras, economic development. You know, our role at Downtown Inc. is also to be a resource for business support. And, you know, in this particular, there's an image here of one of our downtown Bloom grant recipients. So whether it's providing them with much-needed grant funds to help them restart during COVID and thrive, or, you know, the business series, or small business startup programs, many of these, all of these really, that I'm mentioning are free of charge for our businesses. Events and promotion, working really hard to be consistent and persistent about driving foot traffic and tourism to downtown businesses through collaboration, marketing, PR, events, promotions. Also, our welcoming community grants that we launched this year in partnership with Better York, York County Community Foundation, Powder Mill, just having that support so that, as we said, as we started this conversation, that our communities are welcoming, inclusive, representative of the diversity of our community. And so whatever we can do to be a part of that and invest in these efforts, this is part of the investment of bid assessments. And so that $124,000, as I mentioned to you, which is what currently the bid assessment funds contribute, that is part of a collaborative effort of private investment, fundraising, and other initiatives so that we can in full and holistically bring these programs and services to downtown. So I will stop there, and certainly if anyone has questions, would like to know more about our process or thoughts on how we arrived at this recommendation, council, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your explanation. Does council have any questions of Ms. Bono? I don't hear any questions. I have none. Thank you very much for joining us, and we look forward to the resolution next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to announce that the next legislative meeting of your city council will be Wednesday, November the 4th, the day after election. Again, I'll repeat, that is November the 4th, the day after election, at 6 o'clock. Same, same time, same station. And with that, please do remember to vote. That's important to be part of our process. Now, let us we'll look at the actual agenda, and I believe there are a couple of items that council members would like to have pulled for further discussion and not included in the consent agenda. I believe one of them was the item number five, the resolution appointing Mr. Muldro as Commissioner. Was there another one, Mr. Rivera, that you wanted to discuss?
Yes, sir. That was item number 12.
Item number 12, you would like that pulled. Anyway, I would like to have item number eight pulled for a little bit further explanation. Anything from council, any other item? All right. Is there a motion to have a consent agenda of all the items except for the final passage of bill number 14, item five, item eight, and item 12?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to go ahead with a consent agenda. Now, items one through 13, less number five, eight, and 12. Is there a motion to have a consent agenda approving those items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Oh, no, we need a roll call. Apologize.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Let us now move to the final passage of bill number 14.
And that is bill number 14, which was introduced by Sandy Walker at the last council meeting, a bill making appropriation of money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $20,000 for special events for the, an agreement with the parliament.
Both to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would like to add that in case the COVID-19 pandemic creates problems for any of the future events, this $20,000 will move into next year's budget. It can only be spent on events for the city. Would you please call the roll?
Let's see here. Excuse me, Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Now, resolution number five.
So introduced.
Would council like me to read that in full? Or just by short?
By short would be fine with me.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, no. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council, that council hereby confirms the appointment of Michael Muldro to the position of Police Commissioner for the York City Police Department with an annual salary of $110,000, and approves Muldro as a sworn officer of the department effective October 26, 2020.
Move for a vote. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Rivera, do you have comments?
I do. I just want to say that this is the single most, the single most important vote in my short tenure in serving the people of York City. And, and, and I'm so honored and proud to be part of this.
Now, thank you. Anything else from council?
I just wanted to thank our community for their emails. We received a lot of emails in the last 24 hours, so we appreciate our community being involved and engaged, and we encourage you to continue to be involved and engaged throughout, throughout the upcoming months and year, especially with our budget coming up. Please share your input, but we appreciate your email.
I have to agree with that, Sandy, that it was heartwarming to hear from so many people with so many nice words about Mr. Muldro. Anything else from council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
An emphatic yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that was unanimous and so ordered. Item number eight.
Congratulations, Mike, on the appointment. You in there, brother? You in there?
Yes, congratulations.
Oh, it's nice to see a happy man.
Yeah, congratulations that we all look forward to working together with you.
We surely do. We surely do.
He's on mute, so you can hear him.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to moving forward and doing what we can, partnering with the community and the department to get some great work done. So thank you.
Welcome aboard.
You're welcome.
Very good. Have a nice evening, Mr. Muldro.
Commissioner Muldro.
Commissioner.
Very good. Item number eight, please.
All right, and that is to be introduced by Councilwoman Vice President Walker.
Introduced.
Is counsel okay with that also be read in short?
Short, short title.
Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, opposed, no? All right, be it resolved by the council of the City of York that the agreement between the City of York and the White Rose Lodge Number 15 for Tornal Order of Police for the period of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020, 2022, I'm sorry, inclusive, is approved. The mayor is authorized and the controller is authorized and directed to execute the agreement.
Both are approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And I believe I saw Mr. Ray has joined us. And I just like a short explanation of the contract for our public. I know you briefed all of us, but I think it's important that the public hear what the contract has ended up being.
Okay, thank you very much, Council President Nixon. The contract that is before you is essentially the results of an arbitration award that was issued in January of this year. Typically, what has happened, there'll be an arbitration award. It sits by itself, is one document. And that just addresses certain items such as wages, health insurance, retirement benefits, that type of thing. Then in a previous document, it'll address all the other issues dealing with the FOP membership. In conjunction with the FOP president and their executive board, the city agreed to combine both of those documents into one. So we have one document that we're working from and is consistent. And when they're talking about this is on page such and such, we know that it's the page of the contract. The arbitration award did address wages, health benefits, there was a slight increase in their premium. There's a, I don't remember the exact increase in the wages, but there is a wage increase for each year. And then some minor modifications to some language that is actually amicable to both parties. The city's team feels that the award was beneficial for the city for the first time in many years, and it was also beneficial to the union. So that's the crux of why this document is before you tonight.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Any comments from counsel? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon? Ritter Dixon?
I said yes.
Okay, Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Now, lastly, item number 12.
That is to be introduced by Councilman Rivera.
Mr. Rivera?
Introduced.
Okay, you wanted to read that, Mr. Rivera?
Yes, so, sorry.
Do we have, do we have a second? Did I hear a second?
Well, we do that when it comes to approval, since it's just introduced, that puts it on the floor for for reading.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, friends. Since 1937, this past Monday, the second Monday of October, has been known as Columbus Day. Tonight, our city of York can lead and do something similar here as our sister city Lancaster has done, given dignity and memory to who often forgot Native sisters and brothers, Indigenous Peoples, the City of York. Whereas a national holiday known as Columbus Day is the second Monday of each October did not become a federal holiday until 1937. And whereas neither York County nor the City of York nor any municipality within the county of York officially celebrates Indigenous Peoples' Week or month. And whereas heretofore celebrating the second Monday of each October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and all future weeks, starting with the second Monday of each month as Indigenous Peoples' Week, is an honor and empowerment of native cultures in York County, South Central Pennsylvania, and everywhere, and a path to enlighten and educate current and future generations about authentic history, sacrifices, rights, respect, and responsibility. And whereas in the context of the history of Indigenous Peoples in present-day York County, in 1616, explorer mercenary Etienne Bruhl, the first European to come present-day York County, traveled down the Susquehanna River to the Chesapeake Bay. Bruhl, then working as an interpreter for explorer Samuel D. Champlain, became the first white man actually to set foot in the future Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. According to historian George Sheets, Bruhl had been sent to the tribes of the Susquehanna in 1616 to ask for reinforcements in a proposed attack against Onondaga Fort, one of the strongholds of the Five Nations of the Iroquois Indians in what is now New York State. While waiting for the Indians to prepare themselves, he busied himself in exploring the country. He followed the Susquehanna to the sea, which probably meant to the Chesapeake Bay, a journey that must have included areas of what is now York County. And whereas by 1765, only 149 years after Bruhl arrived here, present-day York County's last few remaining Native Americans departed westward from Indian steps in a present-day lower transferred township. And the source from that is George Sheets in To the Setting of the Sea of the Sun in 1981. And whereas the location of the Susquehannock forts in our area were significant in English court cases leading to the demarcation of the Mason-Dixon line, which determined where York County and surrounding counties would be established. Now therefore, with charity and goodwill for all living peoples and in honor and celebration of America's and York County's first known inhabitants and cultures, and in honor of the Susquehannocks, present-day York County's first inhabitants, the city council of the City of York hereby declares the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and all future Octobers as Indigenous Peoples' Week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry.
I was going to say, is there a motion?
Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any further discussion by counsel? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Do we have any comments from counsel on any general subjects?
Mr. President, I have just a quick comment for our upcoming election for our residents in the City of York. The last time I checked, there are two wards that will be changed. So if you voted at Ward 11, if you're part of Ward 11, which is St. Matthews, that location has been changed to Madison Church of the Brethren at 645 Madison Avenue. And if you are part of Ward 14, where you voted at Kelly Manor, that will be changed to Faith UCC at 509 Pacific Avenue.
Could you say that again for me, Councilwoman?
Yes, ma'am. So for Ward 11, if you voted at St. Matthews in the past, that will be changed to Madison Church of the Brethren on 645 Madison Avenue. And if you voted at Kelly Manor in Ward 14, that will be changed to Faith UCC.
You said Faith UCC?
Yes.
Okay.
509 Pacific Avenue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any remarks from the public?
No, no comments have been received.
No raised hands.
No raised hands? No emails?
So any public that is watching, if you aren't aware, if you want to speak, you need to press the raise hand button if you're watching on Zoom.
I'll wait a couple of seconds to see if somebody has raised a hand.
Nothing.
Nothing, very good. We have no further comments from counsel. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Mayor has a comment, I think.
Oh, you know, when I don't see you, Mayor, at your table, I apologize for missing you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to thank everyone for the wonderful statement to start the meeting. Second, wanted to thank you all for the very wise vote to support Commissioner Muldro. I think he's just one of the exemplary leader for our community. Third, I wanted to thank you for the proclamation on Indigenous Peoples' and Indigenous People's Week, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Indigenous Peoples' Week. I did want to recognize that there were, there are today Indigenous Peoples in York County, contrary to the history books, that are from York and never left York. And also, the Susquehannocks didn't get here until the 1500s. There were Indigenous people here in York for 5,000 years before the Susquehannocks. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that the Indigenous people, they came from, Susquehannocks came down from New York. So there have been folks here in York County, Native Americans here for thousands and thousands of years. So thank you for recognizing them. And it, I know it means a lot to those that I know here in the community. I just wanted to share with you a few events going on Saturday. Good Trouble Ballot March, very exciting. Folks are getting together between 11:30 and 12:00 in Penn Park, and then bringing their ballots by hand and casting them down at the York County Administrative Building at 28 East Market Street. So gathering at Penn Park between 11:30 and 12:00, marching down, and then coming back to City Hall for events until about 2 o'clock or 2:30.
What day was that, Mr. Mayor?
That's this coming Saturday, October 24. Also, the, this is a very interesting project that I wanted to share, Open Houses at the York Merchant. The York Merchant is a subsection of the old New York Wire Building on the 400 block of East Market Street. And they are having three open houses for individuals that want to open up either craft shop areas or workspaces. And they are having open houses on Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., Saturday, 10 to 12, 10 to noon, and on Sunday from 1:30 to 4:30. So a great opportunity for those entrepreneurs that are looking for a little bit more space. Maybe you want to move out of the single room or the garage that you've been working out of. They've got 10,000 square feet there, and they're working on creating a wonderful epicenter for creativity in York. Finally, we've got events downtown this weekend, including the spooky flea market in Royal Square. It's a great time to start your Christmas shopping because it is coming right around the corner. I had a couple of discussions today on the Christmas tree that will be brought in and brought in at no expense to the city taxpayers by Kinsley. It's a wonderful donation. And keep an eye out for additional light in the downtown this Christmas season. So Light Up Night will be coming, I believe, the last weekend of November. Finally, get out and vote. And thank you, Vice President Walker, for sharing the information about the changed home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, my apologies, no intent to ignore you. All right, very well. Now, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.